Suggested.
We stand for the word.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Iman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderwoman Armbruster.
Here.
And there we have Cora.
Very good. For approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, takes us down to a personal appearance. We have Kara Nager here and David Weiss, Gateway West LLC, want to address the mayor and the board. So Kara, can you come to the podium?
Yeah. Yep, so thanks for the time. Just wanted to be available to you guys if you had any questions about the request. Wanted you to be able to personally be able to engage with David. I know that was, you know, something you guys wanted to hear from and just answer any questions you guys have about us basically removing that trailer and bringing in a new one to improve the property.
So are we allowed to ask questions now?
Yeah, I think so. Well, it's up to you. I mean, it's a, it's up to you. How do we all want to work with you? So you have Kara here and David Zunkel.
Okay.
This is not part of like a public hearing or anything. We've already had the hearing. But certainly discuss the issue if you will.
Kara, could you, and I apologize if this might be redundant or something and stuff, but can you explain the ownership of the trailer park from when you first got involved until today? Who was?
Sure. I'm the owner. I'm one of the owners of St. Jen Properties and we owned it when we purchased it and we still own it today. There is a managing member, which is now David Weiss, is the manager of the park.
So Hunter?
Hunter was the previous manager.
Was just the previous manager?
Uh huh. He sold his rights to David.
Right, okay. And then going forward, you are still going to be the owner?
I am still the owner until, yep, until David Weiss fully owns the property.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I think David wanted to just kind of say hello and give an overview of who he is and some background and kind of what he's already done with the park and what he plans to do with the park.
Well, David, you have the floor. You are muted.
Oh, David, we can't hear you.
You're muted.
Oh.
Might have to text them or call them.
Okay, how about that?
There you go.
There you go. There we go.
Okay, Kara, I couldn't really hear you very well, but I assume you just wanted an introduction and kind of talk about what values we're different. So, you know, we're state of the best, Jersey and other properties that we, you know, we try to come in as, you know, management and operate. That it is with improvements of, you know, making sure the units are rented well and under a property management system that'll help encourage, you know, good community living in that area.
So any?
Any more questions? Okay, thank you Kara. Thank you David.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Takes us to the city administrator's report.
We've got an updated report at your seat. A couple of things to let you know about. We're receiving bids for the survey work along the levy property. It'll be coming up January 25th and then selecting a surveyor to split the east section of that property and eventually conveying it through Levy District 3. We also have a bid opening on the 25th for the cemetery maintenance contract. We had a mandatory meeting on Monday for the cemeteries and we only had one contractor show up. So that's the only one that is actually eligible because they had to be at a mandatory meeting to have everybody get the same information on the, on the cutting that we were going to be doing at the cemeteries. So we'll bring that to you and see what happens.
Hey David, could you go ahead? Could you go ahead and mute your phone, my friend?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Go ahead and mute it.
There we go.
Mute it. Thank you, sir.
That's what I was. Thank you.
Um, Bobby, I missed everything you just said. Or you must, you repeat if you said anything that was revised and maybe in the future, would you be able to send us your revised report for those of us that are not sitting at the table?
Yep. I keep thinking about just sitting at the table. I'll make sure I get you, get your copies. So we have the survey work that we will be getting, we have put out for RFQs. We'll be getting back those qualifications. We'll go through that, try to select a surveyor for the east side of the levy property to do that survey work so we can convey that to the Park Service in the future through Levy District number three. And we also have a bid opening on the 25th for cemetery maintenance contract. We only had one person show up to the bid mandatory meeting. We met at Memorial Cemetery in Cresslon. So we only have one qualified bidder that will come in, but we'll see what their price is and then the board can decide yea or nay whether to go with that or not. Bobby Bowser is our new cleaning person for City Hall and she'll be starting this week. We've received a preliminary set of plans for the Phase 1 remodel for City Hall and the police department. We are reviewing that. Get some comments back to Steve Bacon. What we're shooting for is maybe early March to get the bids in and then we can bring that to the board for approval. Maybe get some construction started this summer, late spring, summer. The boxwoods are gone at the, along Market Street at the Welcome Center. We need to throw some mulch in there to dress it up a little bit, but they had been pulled and they were in bad shape, so we really weren't able to save any of them. The MML Legislative Conference, yearly conference is coming up February 9th and 10th. I'm going to sign up virtually, so I'll be watching it here in the boardroom. I don't feel as comfortable yet traveling to Columbia to do it, but we will have that here in the boardroom. And sales tax receipts are in for December. We again saw an increase from year to year from 2019 to 2020, about 15% higher than 2019 for the general use tax. Well, the transportation and capital tax are up about 13%. The use tax surprisingly was actually down from last year, but overall for the year, it was up by about 29%. So it just shows you how strong it was last year when everybody was buying stuff for Christmas and getting deliveries. We were kind of saying, we dropped a little bit this year. Can't really attribute it to anything, but it was good to see those numbers overall for the year. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you. David? With your staff reports?
Good evening. Not too much on staff report. I wanted to point out that under the Heritage Commission, there's a grant, the contract to go along with that grant on the consent agenda tonight. So been approved by SHPO and by the vendor that's involved. So any questions, let me know. Under the Building Department Code Enforcement, I did want to note that Gene and I are taking weekly ICC courses, training courses for international code compliance. So that is in cooperation with the books, the codes that we've adopted through the city. So it's a weekly course on Wednesday, a real good course started this week. So just want to let you know that. Under planning, what's that?
How long does it take? Hour, two hours?
It's about hour and a half to two hours. Runs for about, I think, nine weeks. Planning and zoning, we approved a, it wasn't necessarily zoning amendment, it was just a zoning review, kind of a strange consideration for an older lot that wanted a waiver to the setback. That's on your agenda tonight, but that did pass through planning and zoning. That's really all I have on my report unless you have questions.
Any other questions, David?
Yes, sir.
I take it this spring, we'll be going back. There's some, there's some properties that could use some painting. So we went through that, we started enforcing to get that, and we go back and start enforcing that.
There, I'm not sure exactly which properties of the eight that are down there at the bottom of the report on the 2018 focus of the eight, two of those are just painting.
Okay.
One of them is under new ownership and I think you'll see some improvement. The other one, I've hesitated to issue a citation for simply painting, but I certainly can because they, we've been through multitudes of letters.
Been diligent of doing that. We've been seeing an improvement, you know, and want to keep moving in that direction.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Kenny's not here. Y'all had his report. Any questions? Well, Gary, you can come up and answer questions. You're a volunteer. Just roll right on into your, your field operations report.
Is there any questions on fire that I might be able to answer?
I have one, Gary.
Okay.
You guys know eight vacancies on the department. Is that an all-time high? Is that average? Or what?
It's high.
Yeah.
Any, what can be done? So, I mean, I know we can't just make them appear, but what could be done?
We've tried everything. I don't know the solution to that.
It's a concern for you guys in the department, right? It hurts to be down eight.
Yeah, because we're all getting old.
That's what you've got to look at, too, is.
That brings up a question, Gary. Is it, it's not the old guys we're losing, it's the newer guys that come in for a short period of time and then they're gone.
You know, change jobs or out of town or move out of town and.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'm making a note, as a citizen, it's concerning to me. And at what point do we start to hurt and we can't sustain operations? Is there a point we get to where we need to really do something drastic to get that plugged up?
I'd say we're at that point.
Okay.
So when these guys leave, I mean, you know, you mentioned changing jobs, moving. I mean, does some of them just get, with the amount of training that's required and the amount of time put in?
I don't know that that's really affected much. We just had a few younger guys that, you know, moved away for jobs and things along that line.
That had been brought to my attention earlier. It is a big requirement.
I mean, certainly nobody's, nobody's to blame, but if we continue to watch this number on a downward trend, do we need to form some kind of a working group? Do we need to, we need some focus on this somehow to keep this trend?
Then that'll be pretty much questions for Kenny.
Okay. But as a guy who's out there on a truck, I mean, we need to support you guys on how you do it, you know?
What's the minimum age for volunteer? 18, 21?
Uh, I think they get on at 18, but they can't drive a truck till 21.
I thought it was something.
Well, the big thing is it's a volunteer situation and, you know, there's some communities that just went to compensating a few, you know, like maybe the chief and another officer or whatever, having them more, I guess, readily available, you know? So I don't know if that's part of the answer, possibly.
That might be something we look at, too, is, you know, with some kind of stipend, you know, now you're a volunteer, you still, you know, just to make it a little bit more attractive. Those are things that we control with the budget, you know? So, yeah, I think those are things we, I think we, it's what he said, it's getting critical. So we probably need to sit down with the team and get some thoughts, you know, on how to try to help out, you know? Maybe, I don't know, a little bit recruiting with some young people coming out of high school. I don't know, it's just.
I mean, certainly the financial resource is finite to some extent and I don't, I don't make an argument to just throw money at a problem, but we can't, I don't know how much longer we can sit here and take a report when we're seeing the number down, the roster number is continually going down and we can't just sit here and, and sit by idle on that. We need to take some action on that.
You know, every week you see, you know, they're adding the newspaper and signs out, you know, and, you know, it's so, those are things I have to look at.
You know, when the bell rings, we hope they're coming.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You know, Gary, one of the things I know we do, I brought up years ago and stuff, is, you know, the fire department backs up the ambulance district when there's cases of hard to get people out of, you know, something and stuff. But, I mean, you know, when a fireman shows up in the middle of the night, he's called out to do something like that, do we do anything then? Compensate them or do we?
We get, the only thing is with the compensation, it used to be considered like a clothing allowance and it kind of gotten shifted more towards the training. You know, you show up for so many trainings, you get to pull them out. That's the only compensation of anything there is. And that's kind of covered gas and clothes because you do run clothes and.
Right.
And then Gary, one aside, I didn't cut you off.
No, no.
I just want to make one more comment because I'm assuming that the chief may watch this later or hear something about this discussion. In no way are my comments and criticism on recruiting effort or anything you guys do. I just want to look at for you guys on how do we all work together to fill a gap, so.
I agree with Mike. It's a definite concern. We had no idea we were down that many of them, but.
Yep.
Change hats now.
Thank you, brother. Change your hat. Okay.
Well, you guys got my report. We put up and took down Christmas decorations. We got all our snow equipment ready to go. Cut down a couple of dead trees in the park and a couple of buyouts. We did replace a couple of the trees in the park with new ones. Worked on the road at the brush site, cleaned the last section in the drainage area and point base, patched potholes, service vehicles, dump trucks. Made light poles for downtown and got five of them back up now. And made a gate to get into the drainage area and point base. Questions, comments?
I do know the point base thing was much improvement.
Yeah.
Much appreciated over there.
That's right.
If you work on the road that goes around the piles, because I know I was down there one time, that drain may be just like, I don't know if I'm going to be free here.
Actually, what we did is Steve had some old well casings down there. So we laid one in there and covered it rock so it can drain out, yeah.
A lot of people just dump right at the beginning or end the road either side. You know, just art.
Yeah.
And there's no trash, is there? I mean, I guess once in a while.
We're doing pretty good on that.
Yeah. There's still a couch down there, isn't there?
It's a, it's a, some kind of a seat.
Okay. Yeah, just curious. Thank you.
Would you like to head it up to your house?
To what?
You looking for one?
Yeah.
Well, I've seen them around town sitting on porch.
We'll deliver that up to his house.
Yeah, bring it up.
Thanks, Gary.
Delivery.
Toby, you're up with our tour.
I think one thing Gary left out, you guys did some of the downtown signs too, Gary?
What's that?
You put up some of the downtown signs already?
Yeah, the wayfinding.
So, yeah, the wayfinding signs came in early in the week and they've started putting those up for the businesses that purchased those signs late last year. So those are getting updated throughout town. Starting off, so I'd start off with some of the media coverage, all of it related to the National Park Service establishment, including the, this is the Bee Magazine that Southeast Missourian publishes. It's related to the business events that take place in that, in the region. And they did a nice spread. Actually, Senator Blunt wrote the piece and it turned out to be a little two-page spread with a photo that they featured on last month. So some nice publicity in Cape Girardeau for St. Genevieve. Also gave you a copy of the Missouri Travel Guide, which came out recently. Those markings are some of the prominent places where St. Genevieve appears in the book. This is the one we have at the staff where they marked all the places St. Genevieve appears. So there's a lot of mentions. We have an enhanced advertisement in there, so it's a picture and some wording. And then we also took out a small 16th of a page ad and they cut us a price on getting both of those things. In addition, they also featured the bicentennial edition this year. So there's a couple of other mentions of St. Genevieve related to the state's bicentennial in there. So a few, a few additional mentions this year because of that. We had a couple of visitors to the national park, including Dr. Paul Kowalski from New Jersey, who has a goal of visiting all the national parks in the country. And so every time they add parks, he continues traveling around the country to see them. There, in the packet is a full page, front page from the Daily Journal, over in Park Hills, that ran a feature and photo on him. And then the Herald Newspaper did a story on Ada Gray, a young woman who, she's visited 345 national parks as, through the Junior Ranger program. She came down from Chicago earlier this month with her family. The Daily Journal also published a calendar, which I've given you a copy of, in the month of February. We did a sponsorship with some partners, Common Grounds Coffee Shop and Sess Fras Creek Originals and Sweet Things Sweet Shop, all went combined in for the sponsor of the month of February. So if you look on there, we've got a full, full spread for that month. Mostly it's an advertising vehicle for advertisers through the Daily Journal. On the topic of national parks, I did not put in my report, but some of the things have come down this week or so. They actually are going to have a full-time maintenance person who's going to start on Monday. So the person who's been doing maintenance for them was a seasonal worker. His last day is Friday. And so they're going to have a full-time permanent person doing maintenance starting Monday. They also probably have a seasonal maintenance person next summer in addition to some seasonal park guides that they're going to be looking at, too. Their first full-time interpreter is going to be on staff starting February 1st and she's actually in town already. Her name is Emily Smithy. She's been volunteering. So she's actually been leading people through the Jean Baptiste Valet House or coming to the Welcome Center and talking to visitors on weekends when she's in town. But her actual start date is February 1st and then he's going to have another full-time park ranger starting in March, looks like. So their staffing is starting to ramp up to the point where they're having a presence in town. On the second page of my report, I mentioned upcoming events. We've got the Chocolate Walk coming up with 18 shops participating. So that has sold out in the past. $15 per ticket online. You can purchase them through the downtown St. Genevieve Facebook page. We'll take you to their website. I would, I would not be surprised if they sell it again this year. So if you're looking to go, I would look to get your tickets pretty quick. We'll have a bicentennial photo display coming to the Welcome Center on February 11th through March 2nd. So it'll be a collection of 200 photos taken by amateur and professional photographers from around the state, different times of the year. It's, there's a version of it online, too. It's kind of interesting. I scrolled through it this week. Has a picture at Hawn State Park. There are some photographers that are known to come through here locally that are also included in the display as well. So that'll be at the Welcome Center, it'll say almost three, four weeks and will be open nine to five every day for those events. Coldus Sadat in April. St. Jen Community Center is also doing an event that same weekend. They're going to have a touch of truck event on April 24th that'll include heavy equipment, emergency vehicles, and kids and families will be able to get close up to some of those things. They, I just got a note today, the Garden Walk, which is scheduled in May, actually has been canceled for this year, partially, I think, due to the planning. They haven't had planning meetings for a while because of the restrictions placed on, related to COVID. So I've mentioned here about some items I'm looking at for 2021, including print materials, which I'm actually in the process of getting some quotes for new rack cards that we'll be producing here pretty quickly to get those out to hotels and welcome centers. And then also trying to do something with the website either early in the year through our current web provider or might look at some options later in the year if we have to do it more expensively in the next budget year. But you'll notice on page three of my report, we have some website data. Includes some demographics, both historically of the last 10 years through the Google Analytics and then comparatively from last year and this year, which are a number of users and those numbers all trended upward based on our, our social media campaign that we ran this year through Madden Media. But one of the things that did decline was the pages per session and the average time people spend on the website. And I think there are things we can do there fairly easily to make that more interactive and put more information out there that people will spend more time and hopefully find that a more helpful tool for their planning. You'll also see in the information that the number of countries where people visited the website from declined. I think obviously in a pandemic, you're not going to schedule foreign travel. So most of the people that were looking at the website were from inside the country and have the breakdown there by cities, ages and gender also. Our visitation totals are in the top chart on page three. We were down significantly from last year, in part being closed for a couple of months and then obviously reduced travel with the pandemic. The final four months of the year, actually, we're down only 12% from 2019. So especially the last couple of months, we actually held pretty steady, comparatively speaking, with previous, with last year. Having the Christmas festival go on certainly was helpful. We had the Pecanapalooza in November that I think brought in a decent number of people as well. Are there any questions?
Do you have maintenance agents that you take care of the Welcome Center and all the other facilities involved?
They have been helping out in the Welcome Center. Some, when some issues need to be addressed, their current maintenance person has come over and assisted. I think there are some limitations in terms of what they can do under the current situation until that conveyance is completed.
Where's that, the large vehicles, where's that going to be held?
At the community center is hosting it.
Okay.
I believe what they're going to do is, I mean, in April, with the water park hasn't opened yet, so I believe they're going to use that parking lot and have a variety of vehicles over there and tenants can go do photo ops and such. They were going to have the event last year, got canceled out in the spring and then they've scheduled for this year.
That'd be pretty cool.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to our COVID discussion. I think, you know, a lot going on. I don't, last I heard that our health department hadn't, you know, put the vaccine. I don't think we're there yet. I know they, what I'm reading in the hospital, they are administering some vaccines, so. But now's not the time to let up with that. I think we need to continue to be diligent. I think this boardroom and this office, we need to continue to wear masks, you know? Especially that's where a lot of the problems are, is in enclosed conditions here, you know, with the spread of this. So I think it's something we're going to do. I know the last meeting we had was kind of a big, there was a big group here and there were some people without masks. I don't think it's too much to ask that we wear masks at our board meetings. Some kind of cover up. So we need to stay diligent. Our numbers are pretty good. We've had some deaths, so it ramped up, so. Any questions on that? With the, anything to add with the COVID, Suzie or Ashley?
I was just wondering if anyone reached out to Jenny Mueller to see if maybe she would like to come to one meeting a month if she's available?
Pam called her last week, I believe, wasn't it? And asked her, invited her to the meetings and she will do what she can when her schedule allows.
Great. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about that? Very good. Takes us to committee reports. Are any public comments? Takes us down to the consent agenda.
Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm going to skip comment.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Under the minutes from the last meeting on December 10th, Bill Number 4402, I don't know if it's a form for me to clarify for the record, but on the final sentence of that, for the motion for the second reading, I was a vote for no on that, and it has me listed as yes.
Okay. Another big quick drag claim? Okay. Take care, good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have a motion?
In a second.
In a second for the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to old business. Takes us to Bill Number 4402. An ordinance, this is the second reading of an ordinance approving a special use permit for St. Genevieve Properties LLC and Hunter Lee Holdings that will allow the replacement of a non-conforming mobile home at 205 South 10th Street, Lot Number Four, with a newer mobile home.
Make a motion, we approve Bill Number 4402.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, second.
Okay, so we have a motion, first and a second. I need a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
No.
Alderman Jokers?
Extained due to family relationship.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Einman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Five yes, one no, one abstained, one absent. Bill Number 4402 now becomes ordinance 4324.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. Bill Number 4404, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, repealing Section 380.1190 of the Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Make a motion to approve Bill Number 4404.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4405, an ordinance approving a bid for mobile from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated for the purchase of nine mobile data terminal docking stations with adapters and six keyboards in the amount not to exceed $12,105. Amending one, I'm sorry, $135, $135, and amending the general fund budget number 10, police number 16.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to make a second reading.
Seconds.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill Number 4405, an ordinance approving a bid for motion from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated for the purchase of nine mobile data terminal docking stations with adapters and six keyboards in the amount not to exceed $12,135, and amending the general fund budget number 10, police number 16.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a first and a second? I need a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Einman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4405 now becomes ordinance 4325.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4406, an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen approving a waiver to the R2 General Residential District Front Yard setback regulations for a lot of record at 10 North 9th Street. Move approval. Got to have some discussion. David? Is David up here? He's back there. He's having a talk. I think Bob's got a question.
Yes.
That's good. That's fine. David will be able to answer.
Shoot, I'm sorry. Thanks.
I understand the dimensions of this, but basically have a little concern over this of any, of something in the future that we talked about a little bit, and that's Ninth Street, the school buses, the width of that road. You know, we even talked briefly about possibly in the future getting an engineer involved. And I realize this is basically in the same print as the porch that's on there now, but not knowing where the property lines are up there. I mean, is that something we should consider, or?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, we're coming out to the front of that house. We're going to be closer to the road. It's already pretty close.
How close, how far off the road will we be to that, to that addition?
The road is approximately the proper line, property line, might be a foot one way or the other, but it'll be 12 foot off the property line.
Okay.
And I have the same concern, but the ordinance states this is, can happen.
Maybe. Don't we have some residents along there, or they're actually closer than that now?
Yeah, the house that faces Jefferson but corners to Ninth is approximately six foot off the road. The house at the very front of Ninth, that faces Ninth but corners Market, the corner of that house is about eight foot off the road. The others are a little more than this one will be, but the average there is, I think it says in the report, 18 feet.
Oh. Is there an entrance or an exit coming off of that addition that you want to put in?
There'll be a front door on the addition, no porch. This is according to what he stated at planning and zoning. There'll just be a sidewalk from the driveway and then a step up into the house.
So you're looking at nothing else being able to come out except a landing and some steps to make access. And realistically, we're, we do anything with a road, we're not going to be able to widen it at all, so. It's going to be, it's going to be really tight. We had an estimate come in if we want to make full improvements. I mean, you're looking at same thing as Buescher and...
Westwood.
Yeah, if you wanted to do that, you're looking at probably $400,000. But I mean, we have looked at it, and we can move forward with it in the future, but that, and that's not widening it anymore. That's not buying any... So the footprint of the road is going to stay. And I, I was thinking your concern there, too, because it's not a lot of front yard, but it's a sufficient amount to where I don't see where it's going to be a problem.
You know, by the time you, you know, if there ever is any improvements, by the time there's a sidewalk and curbing and things like that, I mean, I, that's my only concern. But is that the only alternative to get some extra footage? I mean, side back?
Alternative to what?
He's doing both, actually. He's going to front and back.
There's a, there's a drawing in the report.
It's going to be a major improvement on the property.
Yes, he also...
He's done some improving on there, too, so.
He also improved the house next door.
Next door, yes. He did good work.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good question. Are you all set, Bob?
I made a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for a second reading.
I'll second you.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
The second reading of Bill Number 4406, an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen approving a waiver to the R2 General Residential District Front Yard setback regulation for a lot of record at 10 North 9th Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Einman?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4406 now becomes ordinance 4326.
Very good. Any other business? If there's no other business, if I have anything else to say during this meeting, go in, take five minutes and go into our work session. Thank you all very much.
I think we should make good firefighters.
There was a time, there was a time when that would have been a true statement.
Don't play the age thing out.
That time is not now.
All right, let's go ahead and call our work session to order. All right, you had your vacation, now back to work.
Hmm.
Have to approve you.
What vacation?
What vacation?
Maybe you did from us. Oh, I didn't say it.
No, I've been texting him and calling him.
That's good. All right, happy it's up to you. Let's go. All right, we talked about health insurance, wanted to form a committee, so I'm looking at getting volunteers for that committee. I thought we had that committee already. We did, but we, you know, we kind of just wrapped it up, and I didn't want to just assume that... Well, I say we reappoint them.
Let's do it.
What do you think, Bob?
I'm ready.
Well, first guy on the list, I don't know who he is, his name's misspelled.
Sorry about that. I'm typing kind of quickly. Is he okay with everybody that was on that list? So you've got three board members, because you also wanted to reform, we had all the department heads and we had other employees. You wanted to shrink that a little bit. So we have three board members, two department heads, two employees. And these are the folks I felt that really participated the most at the last meeting, so I wanted to keep them on. So that's what I'll do with that.
That's it.
I mean, I don't mind, but if somebody has an objection to me being on there, I'm more than happy to bow out.
I feel well represented with you on there.
I bet so. You know, you've got a lot of experience in that.
Yeah, right.
He does.
Okay, the contract is coming up with Alliance Water Resources in September, so we're going to have to select somebody or somebody will redo it, and we need to form a committee with that group, so that we can, you can kind of give me some direction unless you want me to run roughshod over this, and I didn't think you would. But you have three options. You can stay with Alliance, roughshod. Three options are RFQ, so we look for qualifications, RFP, you're looking for a bottom line, or you bring it in-house. That's been recommended by one of the board members that's not here tonight, that's absent. So if you want to discuss that internally a little bit before we start moving forward on that, it would be nice to have a committee together to discuss it, to give me some direction as to where the, where this board would rather be moving forward. So that's why I've, you know, tried to put a committee together, and then we feel like we're being represented in a group, and we can make some decisions as to how we want to pursue it. And I'm not advocating one way or the other. We've had a good relationship with Alliance. How long have we had Alliance? 10 years? 10 years.
Steve?
11.
11 years?
The water plant itself was beginning in '09, and the water distribution system and collection system, the wastewater plant was added in 2010.
What's Steve's recommendation?
I know there's been talk, and I know of one.
I'll give you my opinion on it. No. Our problem with it, I just read where the governor, the ex-governor in Flint, Michigan, they're, they're in a lot of trouble because they got some bad water, you know, and I wasn't around or very involved when I, and there was quite a few people told me that we were there at one time, we had some bad water, and Alliance come in and fixed it, and it served us very well.
Right.
Yeah. I like the line.
And I, and I understand, but if we, you maybe have to put it out for bid, and you could probably find somebody cheaper, but when something's not broke, I don't believe you want to fix that. I think we've been, have good service, we've got great water. Can we do it cheaper? Maybe somebody else could, but it's a big gamble. And when you got a good vendor, you, I always thought you'd take care of them and you'd stay with them.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my view on it.
I'm going to go back to Happy's previous life and stuff and just ask him, you know, you've been involved in different areas with different situations.
So what, what I've given you...
Not to bring that up as a negative, but...
Yeah, so the cities I've worked at before have all had everything in-house, just that's how they had it set up when I got there. So everything was already, you had your employees and that, and everything was just done through, you know, your departments. And that works fine, but we didn't have a lot of the problems that St. Genevieve had at the time that they moved to another, to the company to get them out of the troubles that they had. And the one thing that is nice about Alliance is they have resources that we don't have in the city. So that's been an advantage that we've taken, that we've taken advantage of myself, has taken advantage of since I've been here. So in RFQ processes, we look for qualifications to see if they can do the job. RFP is the bottom line, we're looking for a bid, and then bringing it in-house means that we then have to fix... And then bringing it in-house means that we then have to figure out how to hire everybody that would be responsible for these departments. And that, that can be complicated.
So is a, is a, I'm sorry.
No, I've never brought a, a group in, so I've never had that kind of situation.
Is a fourth option to just stay with Alliance and not have to go through all these processes, or do we legally, or should we just for, you know, the, the right thing to do, go out for an RFP or whatever?
Uh, but aren't you looking for some just from oversight from the board to help with the decision process?
Which way, which way you want to move forward, because.
So does it need to, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Does it need to be a com- does it need to be a committee or can we just let him know what our thoughts are, I mean, does it?
Well, maybe, or you ask for somebody to help with the negotiations with the contract?
I'm pretty solid on what I think.
Yeah.
I'm pretty solid where I am.
So if we, if we do an RFQ process, which is my recommendation, because you look for qualifications, you look for the group that can do the work, and then, and this will be coming up on our next item on the agenda. You, you pick the person, for not sorry, you pick the company, talk to them, feel if that they're, they're, the people that you want to have working in the city and then you negotiate a price. That's how the RFQ process works. Uh, so I need a committee to help do that, just like we did with, uh, with the, uh, forward slash, we'll be, we'll be talking about in a couple. So that's kind of what I'm, what I'm shooting for, I've just had input from other board members of, you know, trying to come up with other options, so I didn't want to just throw it on you and say, here's how we're gonna do it.
I'll be on the committee.
Yeah, I don't have a problem helping, since Joe points out, I'm not on, you know, committees and stuff, but anyhow.
So that's what Joe wanted.
Didn't Prince say he wanted to be on that too?
Yeah, I think Joe Prince wants to be on.
I just heard it.
I heard him.
Yeah, I think.
Joe, if you don't, if you don't, if you, if it bothers you, say something.
Yeah.
All right, he's on.
What happened, you don't show up with me?
I learned that from you.
Bob, I'm, I'm writing this down, how do we normally sort that process?
P R I N C.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I will be in touch.
Gary?
Uh, Prince, Prince, um, Amber, are you?
Amber.
I mean, Ashley.
What about Kim? You just leave, leave Kim out of it, huh?
Oh, my God, it's the second time I've been.
I'm so sorry, Amber, sir. I love you, me and, Rob, I'm getting old.
It's okay, Gerard.
It's Garrett.
Really?
Yeah, that's Garrett.
All right. So, next item on the list is IT managed services, so we have budgeted this year for improvements to our IT system. We've got a committee, um, and Monty Hickey with forward slashes here, uh, to answer any questions, any, any issues that you have. So the process was, we needed to make improvements to the, to the IT system because we had been rated not as, not, we weren't, we weren't in a position that we was wanting to be with our equipment, with our system, with the protections that we have. So I don't have the technical skills, nobody on staff has technical skills to do that, and you can't just drop in, fix something and then leave. It needs to be monitored, it needs to be looked at, uh, somebody's gotta be looking over the system. So if you want to do it properly, the idea is a managed services type of company. So we went out for RFQ, uh, we had three companies that had, that sent us their qualifications, uh, my committee looked at it, uh, we came up with our decision, uh, Forward Slash had the highest rating, followed by Regis, followed by Computech out of, of Columbia. Uh, so we start with the, the, the person that, the group that gets the highest rating and discuss with them, see if, you know, they're a good fit, so I had myself and Sue sit down and talk to them. Feel like they're a good fit for the city, uh, and it's, it's, the option is then that they will come in, uh, and, and Monty can explain a little more of what they'll do. That they would come in and help us with this, with this system, get it set up where it needs to be, monitor it, and then, uh, and then advise us as to what we need to improve, what we need to change, what, what equipment we need to get. So we're not just saying, let's buy this, let's buy this, and kind of just take it stabbing internally, we're doing it as, as, you know, it's, it's planned out and it's, it's thought of. So with that though, because you have all of this work that'll be going in daily, you have a cost that's involved in this. So we have a discounted cost to start off with, that increases over the next, uh, seven years, uh, and then that will be, uh, the cost that we will pay, at that point, it just kind of stays, you know, increases a small amount. And we start off at three thousand per month and then we look at larger increases because we're starting with a discounted price for the first few months. So we budgeted twenty-eight thousand this year for IT upgrades, um, their fee will eat up most of that out of the, uh, general fund. What we'll have to do in the future is break this out into the different departments so that all, we'll, we'll spread that joy. But then we will probably start switching things over to, uh, different programs, again, and they'll be responsible for working with our vendors to make sure our, our equipment works properly. So I know this is a lot to throw at you, again, uh, do you want to ask Monty any questions? Monty, do you want to kind of talk about what services you'll be offering us?
Um, yes, thank you, um, I appreciate the opportunity, um, so, so there's a lot that, that's been said, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great, so, so there's a lot that's been said, um, just in, even in the, uh, the, the general council meeting, uh, and I've, I've listened. And some of the approaches that, that we take, um, for other cities, um, and actually neighboring cities as well. Um, we, we understand the, the lack of, of security and technology over time from a lot of these municipalities, it just is what it is. Um, it really comes down to cost, it comes down to expertise, it comes down to having the, you know, people around that has that expertise that can explain it. And really how we come in and assess is, um, is we look at it from industry best standards or by NIST, which is the National, uh, uh, Institute of Standards and Technology. And, and really, this is a very common, um, um, technology side of things. And I'm, I'm, I will say, just like, uh, with, with Happy going to M M L, um, I'm at all the M M Ls and M C M As and I listen to everyone talk and sometimes I'm a speaker and sometimes, uh, we, we, uh, pose different questions to different municipalities. Um, part of, um, our assessment that we did, we did a preliminary assessment under Martin, um, a couple of years ago, that yielded, um, some not great results, but we understand. So part of our process of, and how we differ from other technology companies, is, is that we look at things from a, a business perspective. Um, we look at a very, take an umbrella approach and a very centralized approach. So that means that we talk to all the department heads, come up with a consensus, and through education and collaboration with those department heads. We come out and develop a one-year, three-year, five-year perspective as an example. What this allows us to do is, is look at the must-have versus the need-to-have versus the want-to-have. And some of these things that, that I've heard even through turnkey, so we do that also, we, we do M D Ts into police vehicles. But that twelve thousand dollars, um, I caution you as the council to say that, is that all that it costs or is that just the hardware cost? Because there is installation cost, there's connectivity cost, there's run rate cost. Our job is to put that all down in numbers for you, to give the board, uh, true facts of numbers and educate them, and then allow you to make that educated decision. Um, we've taken cities, um, over the past several, uh, over the past decade now, um, from a one computer to now having full network infrastructure that combines all of their, um, their city buildings together, uh, links them all together with, with telecommunications, with video surveillance, all back to the T D and, 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 um, dispatch. I know you guys don't have that, but, um, those are the types of collaborative efforts that, that we will provide, along with many other things, from security, obviously, security's gonna be the number one. Um, disaster recovery and continuity planning. Um, part of our original assessment a couple of years ago, um, yielded some not-so-favorable results, and we know that those things are what really gets us in trouble. When we look at, um, St. Genevieve County, we, we know what's happened there, we know what's happened in Cape Girardeau. So we, we don't want to have that same repetitive, um, kind of thing going on, um, with, with technology. So really, we need to hone down on, on some security measures to really enforce that, so that we can build then from that core infrastructure. And as we have budgets and as we have the funds, we're able to make a plausible case to, to then put that in, and get that installed. Um, that's, that's primarily how we handle things, we have a full live help desk, um, that, that offers, um, um, end-user support, so of course Sue won't have to do that anymore. Um, and so they can call in directly, we manage it directly from our help desk, we do procurement. Um, so part of that is, is, is bringing all of that hardware into our office, so that we can manage and link all of that together, configure it and do all of that. So that when we come into the city, we're only there for a short period of time to do implementation. Um, outside of that, I mean, there's annual budgets that I'll work with Happy on, that will, that we all work with, ha- will work with Happy on for asset management. Uh, we build a complete knowledge base, uh, and a kind of a running book, a playbook for the city. The biggest thing that we offer is that oversight. So a lot of times, I know, in the past, uh, couple of years, I have to imagine that you've had an insurance broker sitting in there telling, selling you cyber insurance. And maybe it was part of a rider on your insurance policy. Well, I can tell you that a large portion of any of the cyber insurance claims, majority of them are denied. And the reason why they're denied is that little fine print that we help with. And that is, is that the city has done everything that it can to secure its network and to build policy. So we really come from the business side of it, we understand municipal government, um, we understand the different departments, we understand the needs of the different departments. And we have a lot to offer when it comes to, um, trying to build an umbrella approach where we're having multiple departments utilize those resources. So we can increase resources, reduce costs, that's what we want, is to reduce costs or increase productivity. And build out a network, um, that is, that is, that is cohesive. Um, twenty years ago, um, we have to remember, for just as, just as short time as ten and twenty years ago, systems were more decentralized. And, and if you had a phone system, um, that phone system would stand by itself. And you might have a security system, well, that would stand by itself. Now, every device that you have on that table, every microphone that's connected to Zoom, every computer and TV that's up there, that's all riding on the same exact network as, as your computers back in the offices, along with your printers and everything else. So it's important to, to have a knowledge base of building a centralized system, and that we can build off of. And that's what we do, we take shoestring budgets and we over time, we develop a plan, and, and we know exactly what our IT costs are gonna be over a period of time. Does that, uh, answer the question, Happy, is there any other additional questions or concerns?
Well?
Um, you know, looking at a, a three thousand dollar a month expenditure with a ten percent increase, uh, going on to that, I mean, it, it's not an incidental cost and stuff, but I, I still don't know if I fully understand it. And trust me, I am not an IT expert, but I do have businesses in multiple locations that we have linked together and, and we're, uh, and we even, in our program and stuff, get an operating software to go along with our program, is there, you know, will this incorporate our current operating system, is it a new operating system, software, or what, what?
So, that's a great question, so, so this is a managed services platform, which means we have a full live help desk for, think of, um, of, of a company that has a, uh, an IT department. All the users would call them when they have a problem throughout the day, unlimited, unlimited calls for that. So, uh, so we supply that unlimited throughout the workday. Um, in addition to that, with that cost, we do supply antivirus and anti-malware, that's a business level of licensing, that's included in that. That goes on all the, all the com- the desktops, workstation, servers, um, and such. I wanna, I do want to make a point that, uh, when I talked to Happy about this, uh, earlier, and our costs don't typically go up that amount. Um, the cost was reduced and given a longer term with a higher increase over the first three years. And if you look at that, I, I put the percentages, every, after the first three years, it goes to a three percent annual, which is standard. So that ten percent was just to get us to, to a point where you're not, even at that point, you're not even at where you should be. Right now, you have about forty-five devices and, and a few servers. So with those costs and, and licensing costs of malware, anti-malware and, and so on and so forth, also the live help desk, that's what that all includes. Along with budgets and building a playbook and asset management and so on and so forth. Does that answer your question?
Uh, no, back to my original question and stuff, is this an operating software program?
No, no, we'll be using Microsoft.
No.
Yeah, we'll be using Microsoft, Microsoft, uh, programs, we, uh, the program that we use for, it works, but it does all of accounting utilities.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand that, I, I misunderstood that. Um, no, we would be, uh, do vendor management and work with all of those vendors, um, like Regis, like, um, uh, contracts, like, um, you know, water companies, like, uh, mules for the police department. All of those types of vendors, we will work with to establish what the right hardware and what the right services that are needed. And we'll even help negotiate a lot of that, along with your carrier services and so on and so forth. This isn't to replace any of those, this is to manage all of those. And also, we manage twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, your network, we're managing and monitoring all of your daily backup, all of your, um, your hard drive spaces on servers. Disaster recovery, continuity planning, um, yearly budget, uh, cycles, um, does that kind of help?
Well, when you, you just mentioned and stuff, you're managing our backups and stuff, so, uh.
Sure.
I guess our backups are now still the cl- to the cloud?
Yeah.
Right.
Well, yeah.
So in the event we, uh, we have a, a, uh, we get hacked, you know, and our system goes down, I mean, is there additional charges over and above this, or this covers everything?
No, this, this, this is a, this is a managed services platform for, uh, monthly service fees for all of those help desk functions and licensing for antivirus and, and malware. There, the technology cost for, uh, backups and disaster recoveries and, um, any of those types of events are a reduced rate. Um, and that's just an hourly rate that we would come in. What I can tell you is, is, is that having the proper, uh, backup and disaster recovery in place during a hacking, that allows us to redo the systems a lot more effectively and efficiently. And a lot quicker, um, than, than the current systems that you have today. And what we've seen at, at neighboring municipalities, unfortunately.
Cause I think we do have a rider on our insurance as far as, uh.
Cybersecurity.
Right, but your, uh, experience in the past has not been good with that?
Uh, no, sir, it has not, in fact, uh, Target's the best example of that.
Well, let's pause there, let's talk about that, what's, what is, uh, what, uh, what do you bring to the party? Like, how do we know that, that any claim, if, if we, if we're using your services, how do we know that those claims will be honored?
Well, I can't, I can't tell you that, I'm not the insurance broker, but, but certainly what we can do is just, just help IT. identify that and educate and work through it together with it. We have a lot of experience in that. And I will tell you that the insurance cyber security riders are changing every day. They're fairly new in the industry and they're changing daily. And the number one thing though, is, is that, that you are doing everything in your power to make sure and to, to, to secure the network and to give training to your end users to try and stop any potential hack. Now, we look at things a lot differently. That being said, we know that about 75% of all hacks happen through email. We do that as well. We'll even do phishing campaigns for that cost where we'll, we, we don't like to really talk about that because then it, it kind of informs everybody that we're doing it. But we do trainings and phishing, phishing attempts to try to help eliminate some of those things. All of those things combined, along with acceptable use policy, training the individuals. And most of that just comes in policy. So we'll help with templates for that as well. And, and that you can give to all of your, all the end users, the employees, so they can sign off on, so that yours is the proper do's and don'ts. So it's not just that you have the, the security in place, it's not just a piece of physical hardware for you to be able to do the correct thing that is required under that insurance rider. These are the steps that you have to take. So we help do that. We help with all of those things actually.
You, you would be prepared to support any type of claim that we had then? Like you could speak to it with, with an agent or however that unfolds?
We, we do that. Yes, we do that. Yeah, we testify, we do forensic technology, we do, yes.
And those are all an extra?
And a lot of times it's different. I didn't mean to interrupt anybody, but every agent's different on that. I've got several clients, several cities, I can tell you right now that those riders are all different. And there's, and they'll, that, that insurance broker will offer you probably about seven or 10 different options. And then we have to talk about that. What's best for the city.
But all of those services are at extra charges?
Yes, we hope that we don't have to invoke those. I mean, that the idea is, is that you have some simple network changes that need to be modified. We need some, we need some core infrastructure that you currently do not possess. We need some good security firewall and we need some good backup and disaster recovery with continuity planning. That's really a must have. Once we get through that, then we can start evaluating what's the best course of, of the next two or three, four years. You know, at some point, you're gonna need a new phone system. Well, how does that integrate with the, with the, the current network technology without having to spend even more money? And we can ride on the same existing network that we have. And so that's how we build it, by that core infrastructure. I can tell you, it, we make zero money off of hardware. We don't make zero hardware, but there's no money in making hardware. Our goal is to provide you the best hardware that we know has longevity, that we build out that longevity and that will give you the most uptime. And then we, we build out things like, guys, let's, let's be serious. Just because you bring on a managed services organization doesn't mean that you're not going to get hacked. What we want to do is to educate, put in the proper, the proper pieces of hardware that we can help monitor those things and, and try to reduce that potential for those hacks. And then subsequently, by doing what we wanna do on taking snapshots of your servers as an, as just an example, by taking snapshot, virtual snapshots of your servers and putting them in the cloud, we have the, the, the very quick ability that if, God forbid, if you do get hacked, that we can just wipe those and start over. And we can do that in about two days, as opposed to waiting six months and trying to retrieve data that you probably aren't gonna get back. Cause the key to, to, to true hacking is the fact that it overwrites itself. So if you're not taking daily snapshots, if you're not taking weekly snapshots, at some point, you're gonna get those incremental backups and, and, and then it's gonna overwrite it and then it's gonna overwrite with the virus itself. So what we wanna do is, is go against that, take those snapshots that we can offsite, figure out a good disaster and continuity plan, what's good for the city and what makes sense and what also taking into account budget. And then allowing for those, for that ability to, to reinstitute that technology in case of a disaster. Could be a fire, if, you know, knock on wood, you know, God forbid. It could be any type of, any type of thing. So we wanna be able to use that same technology for both purposes.
Toby, did you have something?
I was curious, I know Bob's asking about the expenses. Is there any offset savings with reducing costs of current malware or any type of stuff that we have now?
So some of that will be covered because we are spending at this point on some, you know, on antivirus and some of the other stuff that we don't rely on. It's not, it's not that much.
It's a annual cost, okay.
So that's why I wanted to have a discussion. Instead of bringing this to the board for a vote, it's, you know, I wanted to talk about this. So the option is move forward, move forward slash, bring it to the board, do two readings at the next meeting. If you don't feel that's in the best interest of the city, we can move to the next person that's in line that we judge to be, you know, qualified. Or we don't do it at all and we, we go out and buy our computers and get somebody to program them and get stuff set up and we just go with it as we're doing now or find a company that just does the, the minor stuff, but we're not protecting ourselves, we're not improving ourselves, which is kinda where we were at when we were talking insurance to begin with. That was one of the concerns is that we weren't protecting ourselves well enough. And this is one of the options to do that.
How much new equipment will we have to buy?
Probably a ton, probably a bunch, cause we'll, we'll need new firewalls, we'll eventually need new computers, new servers, new switches. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be a major overhaul, new phone system. I mean, we're, we're at the end of life on a lot of things anyway.
Yeah.
But maybe some of this through, but some of this is gonna have to be purchased upfront.
Yeah. And I think if I, if I might speak to that, I think that the real important thing right now is the, is the firewall, the firewalls and backup. And then that allows us to make a true assessment across the city and we'll know complete demographics on every piece of hardware that's in the city. And then we'll be able to come back to the council and give an educated, you know, information, factual information that's needed and, and determine what's needed.
Would you be willing to provide us with some of the, you said there was other cities in the area that you now do business with? Would you be willing to provide us with names and?
I've already contacted them.
I've already done that, so, yeah.
Yeah, we did that as part of our, the references that I talked about.
Right.
I, I reviewed those too, Bob, and it all looked solid to me, but.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm, I've called and talked to them and gotten good, good reports back, all of them.
And just keep in mind, we, our job here, our job, Forward Slash Technologies' job and focus is not to come in and replace everything. We don't need to do that. You guys have seven new computers that's in the PD with the new server there. We wanna configure that correctly, putting it on the network. We want to analyze the network, analyze and build out a game plan. So our idea isn't to come in and say, you gotta replace everything. We don't wanna do that. But what we do wanna do at the first is just make sure that you have updated firewall and you have good updated backup and disaster recovery. That's it, at this point.
So can you give us, based on that information, can you give us, over the next 12 months, you know, what are we gonna have to spend from a simple standpoint to pay for your services, to get all these things done and/or a ballpark figure on equipment that you feel will need to replace in the next year?
Yes, sir. My, my goal is in the next, in the first 90 days, in the first, in the first 30 days, actually probably the first two weeks, I'll have an exact number of how many firewalls that you need and how many, what backup and disaster recovery, you know, the, the backup, the retention that you'll need. I'll know that in the first couple of weeks. In the first 30 days, we hope to have a good game plan as to how, let me explain it. So if you have in all the different buildings within the city, I don't know exactly how those are interconnected. Our goal is, is to long-term save on, on that cost of those independent internet connections and also that cost of yearly maintenance on, and security updates for firewalls. If we can put that all through one location, that saves money. So what we wanna do is, is look at the best case scenario and then in the, after the first 90 days, we will build out a whole budget, a one-year, three-year, five-year perspective on what's needed. And we'll have facts. We'll have actual demographic facts on your hardware. Our goal then, and I've talked to Happy about this before, our goal is, is to come to a, about a 25% on, on devices a year. And if we can just get to that point, it doesn't kill the city, you know, in a couple of years to have to buy, you know, 45 computers. If we can replace and get on a rotation between 48 and 60 months, then we're, we're, we're churning things and we're, we're making good progress. So to answer your question, yes, that is, that is exactly what you'll be paying for is a budget, a one-year, three-year, five-year budget. And the, and the hope is, is that you'll know exactly what you're gonna spend.
Right. But in simple terms, you know, to be able to make a decision whether to go with this or not, I'd like to have a projected dollar amount, you know, before we jump on board. You know, maybe it's just a ballpark figure, but it's hard to make a decision and vote on something where we don't know the end result's gonna be.
Yeah.
And maybe Happy knows that.
Unfortunately, I don't have that information.
It's because.
You know, it's not.
Yeah, this is like signing a blank check and stuff. I mean, I.
No, 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 no. We, no, we have to come back to the board and say, here's what you need and here's why you need it. We're not, we're not just, you're not agreeing under these managed services that we're going to do this. We're, we're, we're managing your network and we're gonna give you the, you know, the recommendation and tell you why we believe you need it. And, and then educate based on facts.
Until they get in and monitor the system, he's not, he doesn't know exactly what we're, what we need, what's our priorities. So that cost is, is kinda fluid because there's no way to pin it down until you see exactly what's going on with our network and with our computers and our system.
But I was just wondering, how's, how we came up with the $3,000 figure? Is that just a, everybody pays that or?
That, yeah. That figure is based on the amount of users that you have and the amount of servers that you have and what our call volume is going to be based on that. Because keep in mind, all your users can call, call our help desk unlimited during the workday and off hours too, if, if that's the case, but we, we don't, you're not, that's not an off hours or 24/7. We do do that because we manage other police departments, so we have to have emergency, you know, calls. But that's unlimited for your city employees to call us or, and even you as the council. If you have problems with your computers for council meetings or Zoom meetings or whatever that is, we manage AV, all of the, all of the Zoom equipment and telecommunications equipment that you have in there, we manage that. And that is all included in our, in our help desk. So we, we're, we're cross-trained and, and we manage all of that.
You know, again, it's, you know, said at first, I'm not an IT person and stuff. I am a business person.
Sure.
And a business person to be able to, to develop any type of budget plan, you have to know what your costs are, what to expect for the upcoming year, so you know what to, what you have to spend.
Right. And, and what you're paying for here is a managed services company to help you determine the best avenue in which to arrive at that. You're gonna have to pay for that hardware regardless. It's just spending that money the correct way.
Okay. Any other question?
Nope, thanks.
Thank you. So, board's feeling?
I like, I like the idea of moving forward, Forward Slash.
Well, we wanted this, we brought it.
Right. We budgeted.
We needed it to do something, so, yeah, I, we asked for this, you know?
We just didn't budget enough.
We budgeted enough for this year. We're in good shape. With this budget, we're in good shape.
Yeah.
And there's themes, certain things you have to do. That's all there is to it. It's, we're in the day and age of that, so.
You don't wanna be shut down for two weeks like the county.
Exactly.
Absolutely. All right, so we'll bring this to the board. Wait, hello?
Oh, I was just gonna say, it wasn't just two weeks. I mean, they're still having problems month to month. I hate it.
Mm-hmm. Good point. Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
What, what are we, what are we having problems with? Am I walking into something?
No. Just keep on coming. Lotterys fine.
Yeah.
Uh, Sue, does, does the county have this type of service that they're currently using?
St. Genevieve County?
Yes.
Um, so we don't, we, we actually did their telecommunications for St. Genevieve County. So their telephone system we put in, but we don't do managed services for them. I think they're now wanting that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And I didn't mean that to be sarcastic. I, I tell you, I didn't. And I can tell you that right now in neighboring city and county, we're, we're working on a program to help kind of even work for both of them so that we can share resources across the county piece as well. So our goal is to save you money and, and to show you, here's the best way to spend that money. It's not to do anything other than that. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mommy. All right, moving on. Next item, I just wanted to let you know about the missile horn Reinhardt collections. We had some questions about that. People have been asking for us to develop an agreement with the, with the park service. However, they declined doing an agreement and said they will, they will take it as a, as a loan and then put it on a list. And the list is what I've given you a copy of. We've got four pages of this. It shows you all of the, all of the missile horns that are in their possession and they're responsible for them, which is no written agreement. Eventually, they don't feel that the missile horns are going to fit into their plans for the JVV house. So we may have to find another location of which to display them because contractually with the missile horn, the agreement that we wrote with missile horn and the family is that we have to display them somewhere. So we're good temporarily, but probably in a couple of years, we're gonna have to find another place to hang them. Rotate them out. I mean, don't have to hang all of them, but we need to find a place to, to put them. Toby will take care of that. Already working on it. Thanks, Toby.
Thanks, Toby.
That sounds good.
All right. One of the, one of the things I found, and I know it's on the website, but I didn't pay any attention to it. I don't, I guess a lot of people don't. So we have Textcaster, so you can text messages to people. I'm not sure how this was brought to the board and what the initial idea on it was. We don't have a lot of people signed up. So we have it, we've had sponsors. However, the sponsors were not being rotated well enough because we can't change the sponsors here. We have to call Textcaster to change the sponsor, so it just becomes complicated. And we haven't given enough people access to it. So I'm wanting to redo it, kind of relaunch it, so to speak, and make it into more of an emergency services kind of a program where you sign up and it's because, you know, you get, you're not getting texts because you, there's a board meeting coming up, there's a planning and zoning meeting coming up, but you get texts that there's road closures. Again, you can choose what you want, but you get a, you know, road closure or a storm warning or boil water or some sort of, you know, something that's timely and needs to be passed on. So we would need to like restart this and, and we would just set it up as, you know, for emergency purposes, but we'd also let Gary and Steve have the info. know, something that's timely and needs to be passed on. So we would need to, like, restart this, and we would just set it up as, you know, for emergency purposes, but we'd also let Gary and Steve have the information, so they can get on there and put in, you know, the waters were shut down in St. Jude because we're working on a water line. The water may be off for 10 or 15 minutes, or an hour, two hours, whatever. But anyway, you can put that information out there. Instead of just Facebook, we can do something else, so it gets the word out. But I've also thought about asking St. Francis County, who does our 911, they also use Textcaster. I don't know if we can piggyback off of theirs and set it up minimally through them, and so we're not paying the $4,000 a month, or $1,000 a year that we do now, we can maybe sign up with them. I don't know if you have a feeling about this, if there's your experience with it. Doesn't sound like anybody's gotten much information from it, or.
Nothing.
Even with.
When I do road closures, I contact dispatch, and they put it out for our EMS, and then I guess generally, through some text cast.
And so we may just want to discuss with them and pursue that avenue, and if we've got some other, if we want to do something internally, we can do that.
I know with St. Francis County, the 911 center does the water boil orders and everything on there, but a text cast through St. Francis County, through the dispatch.
Right, right. And you can see that's where it's, that's where they have the information. Suzie, what'd you say?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that someone else was speaking. I apologize. But I do like the idea of making it more for emergency use. I've mentioned over the last couple of years my frustrations with it because it hasn't been very consistent, but I think if we could solve those consistency issues by giving Gary and Steve the access so that they can make, send those out basically for anybody who signed up, I think that would be a huge help. Because I do get a lot of complaints when water's shut down or roads are shut down, that people want to be notified. And I think that would be, if we're using that tool correctly, that that would be a good use of it.
I agree. And I just have feedback from the community as well, that they don't want us to just go to Facebook either. We don't want everybody to assume that everybody has a Facebook account, because a lot of people got off that recently. A lot of people aren't using it anymore. Right, so I'm just saying, I like the idea of consistency, and let's not rely on Facebook for everything.
So, I mean, this Textcaster, that goes out to the masses, or it would go out to?
You have to sign up for it. You sign up, give us your text, or give us your cell number, and please send a text out. That's all.
And not to throw a wrench in it, because it's kind of a hell of a lot, but I think the school districts, if you're interested, we have quick access. So we get Amber Alert, school closings, everything else. I don't know if that's something we might be able to piggyback on, but it's quick access, and it's cool. It's very slick. I'm just going to throw it out there.
It's another option, too.
I think the emergency things, Sue, is what I'm more interested in, but, you know, if there's a water main break, I'd like to hear about it, or if there's a.
Especially when you get calls asking, where's my water?
Or a collapse or.
I'm surprised why they do a fine job, Steve. Thank you very much.
All right, so we will pursue that, and we're going to relaunch it then with that aspect, for emergency purposes.
Thanks, sir.
All right, last thing to discuss. Didn't do this early on, because nobody I knew was working to extend it, and then I've gotten a number of other cities that have said they have extended. This is the sick days that were mandated by the federal government that lasted until December 31st. We adopted that as a sickly policy, pandemic sickly policy. That ran out on the 31st. The pandemic has not just suddenly got away, so the idea is that we, or the question is, would you like us to just extend it, bring it back in ordinance form so we can extend it, so that those that did not use those 80 days, if something would happen, or 80, I'm sorry, 80 hours.
Eight hours.
Sorry, 80 days. We would still have that option. If somebody could stay home, they could, if they had COVID or had, they had symptoms, or if they were exposed, they have the option of taking the time off.
I like the idea of extending it, because as a teacher, I know we're coming back to school. If you're not aware of it, we're going to be coming back as of 25th, David, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and I'm praying to God nothing happens, but as we start bringing everybody back, there is that risk that we could be, we could have a little bit of a peak. So I'm just thinking, let's just extend it, like the other ones have.
So, Happy, did you say extend it to everyone, or just to the ones that?
So it's the ones that have not used it yet?
Right, you extend it. So we extend it, but if you've used your 80 hours, then, you know, you don't get any more. We're not renewing it, we're just extending it for the year, one-year period, just like we do with our regular sick days. You have a one-year period that you use your sick time.
For this.
So this is, we're extending to March 31st, and then we'll see what happens.
Right.
Maybe by then, the federal government will have changed their mind, they'll have done something else, and they'll have mandated us a few seconds.
So they have not, at this point, mandated anything, right? I didn't think so, but.
So, yeah, voluntarily for our employees, just something else to offer, extend out.
I like the recommendation.
And if they haven't used the full 80 hours, then they would have that time available if they don't, so they stay home and not bring it to the rest of us.
But you did say that most of the cities you contacted did not.
The cities I contacted in December had not done anything.
Oh, they just hadn't done anything yet?
Well, and they said, well, the federal government didn't say, no, we haven't done anything, because this was, you know, near close to Christmas, and nobody was meeting. And then, right after the beginning of the year, it just seemed like everybody, there was another question, the same one I asked, and it's like, five, six cities had said, oh, yeah, we've extended it, and we've done this. It's like, where were you folks two weeks ago when I asked? Because I wanted to kind of get an idea. And after seeing what they had talked about, it seemed like a good idea to look at extending this at least until March 31st. And that would be the full year that we've been doing it.
Will we do it at the next meeting?
We'll bring that back as an ordinance, yeah. Do you have anything else? Would you like me to come up with something?
Oh, my God, no.
We're in a meeting, but I'll get that. I don't. I thank you all very much. Thank you.
Getting back to the swing of things.